This work session regular meeting of the Township Council is called to order. Madam Clerk?
In accordance with the Oakland Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building, the township website, electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers, indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 11, 2023.
We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by an invocation by Councilman James Vasinella. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for...
May those assembled here today enjoy the many offerings of our township. May we abide by the rules we have established, those of trust, fellowship, and ethics, and may we place service above self in our daily endeavors. And we always test ourselves and our efforts to be sure they are the truth, good for all concerned, a benefit to mankind, and provide peace and understanding. And this summer, let's keep in our thoughts and prayers the safety of our first responders and our police officers.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Here.
Councilmember Potasnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasinella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Before we go on to commendations and proclamations, Franklin Township Municipal Family lost a valued member of our family. And I thought a person who's known him for almost 40 years might want to say a word about it. Mr. Vornlocker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, a very sad day yesterday and continued today. One of our Public Works employees, Dave Mason, who's been an employee here in the township for 39 years, his anniversary was just this month actually, 39 years. Dave and I have worked together, me 38 of his 39 years. I've known Dave, I got to know Dave very, very well when I became the Traffic Sergeant back in 1999, so about 24 years I've known him very, very well. Dave came to work today in the mood that was common for him, a very good one. He was laughing and joking in the garage and unfortunately went out and shortly after he went out onto the road to actually clean a catch basin. He had a massive heart attack and passed away. Very upsetting to all of us who knew him. Dave was just a genuinely good guy, always had a smile on his face. And beside that was, as the mayor said, when we talk about valued employees, the amount of knowledge and experience that Dave had was not matched in the Public Works Department. He was the kind of guy that I could always go to when I had a question about how something should be done or what the right procedure was for something, how a piece of equipment should be operated. It was Dave that everyone went to, not just me, when they had those kind of questions. He will not be replaced. I don't know that there's anyone that has that kind of loyalty and dedication. He lived here in town, he cared about all of you, and he loved this town, and he will be greatly missed. And I would hope that everyone just keeps Dave and his family, he had a little girl, grown children, and then had another one later in life, and a little girl that doesn't have her daddy anymore. So please keep his family in your prayers and keep all of his coworkers who are having a tough time dealing with this. Not an easy thing, especially when it was so sudden and unexpected, so please keep them all in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could have a moment of silence. Agendas are available near the clerk. We are on to item number five, commendations and proclamations. We have one such thing. If I could call up Director Mayweather for the administration of oaths of office for new officers and police promotions.
So tonight, we will swear in four of our, four, five? Five, sorry. I'm losing track. Of our newest officers. Everyone looks the same back there. I'm like, I'm nearsighted, so I'm like, one, two, three. So we have five new officers that were recently hired in Franklin Township, and, you know, we are happy to have the manpower, we are happy to have these distinguished gentlemen, and we will have them come up and be sworn in.
Nice shiny badges.
Nice shiny badges, nice sparkling uniforms, that's how I like them. All right, so I will, can I see that? Just, um, just real quick, so I don't think... Tyrell Judson, just wave. Justin Scott. Marcus Roundtree. Abdul Aziz. Yes, Karan McLeeny. Right hand, the way all five of you are putting your, on there. Okay, repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police officer of the Franklin Township Police Department according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. And I just want to say real quick, I know a lot of you probably saw the article about the four new recruits that just came out of the academy and they're in training now. I just want to explain, Officer McLeeny came from Maplewood Police Department, so he's experienced, he's here, he transferred over, and we're happy to have him as well, just in case you're like, wait a minute, I didn't see him in the article. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of sergeant of the Franklin Township Police Department according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Last but not least, oh, one more.
No, go ahead.
Lieutenant Brandon Domitore. It's only one of him guys, okay? That's why I'm letting her do it. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of lieutenant of the Franklin Township Police Department according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Brandon, you were my first ride along. I guess I taught you well. Okay, now it's time for public session. Do we have a motion to open for public session?
Subwayed.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in papers say aye. Close say nay. Motion is carried, we're open for public session. Five minutes a person, may only come up once, no yielding of time. State your name and address.
Good evening. Kiki Anastasakis, 3204 Enclave Circle in Canal Walk, and also a member of the Citizens Warehouse Action Group. So I have two points to make, so I want to divide my time judiciously. The first point is actually a comment that a dear friend of mine, Jan Brand, who is out of town today and could not be here, asked me to kindly comment on. It's related to the renderings, the landscape renderings that were utilized by the B-9 developer during the planning board hearing of July 5. And I will pass these on to you to see because that's probably... So what I just shared with the mayor and the esteemed council members are two renderings. One is a rendering, not a photograph, a computerized rendering of year one of the landscape around Metlers in order to conceal or to hide the proposed B-9 structure. And the second rendering, the second photo, is another computerized simulation of year one, just 12 months. So if you would please, members of the council, if you would please compare the two photographs, you will see the actual conditions this year if the warehouse were to be built, and in year one, just a mere 12 months later, miraculously, this rendering shows three very well-grown and tall trees that did not exist in the current year. Now, I know that there was a very qualified individual, professional, who provided and worked on these renderings, but any person comparing the two pictures would see that they're, it almost looks that the rendering for year one is actually photoshopped, has been photoshopped, because there is no way that a horticulturalist with the experience and the education of the individuals that worked on these renderings could actually believe that we would be convinced that trees planted would grow to that height in a mere 12 months. And the reason why this is important is because Metlers is a scenic corridor, and we need to be extremely careful not to have, not to approve an application that clearly is, as of today, in violation of the scenic corridor ordinance, which clearly states that any structure that's built must be properly concealed. So I don't know much about horticulture, but then again, we all have common sense, and I can tell you that if this is what is going to happen, there will be no scenic corridor, okay? There will be no scenic corridor, and they will be in violation of the scenic corridor ordinance. Now, this is segue to my second, my second comment, which is actually a question, and that has to do, now, the trees are very important because they're not simply for decorative purposes, they're not even simply important and necessary to conceal the structure from what is supposed to be a scenic and bucolic corridor, but they also act as protection against flooding. So my question is this, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that the NJDEP is rolling out the new PACT regulations, protection against climate threats. The regulations are supposed to be in effect, if I'm not mistaken, on July 17. We, meaning my friends in our group, and I'm sure all environmental groups in New Jersey are welcoming, my question is, how is Franklin Township preparing to comply with the new PACT regulations? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I am Angelica Granados. I live in 3307 Jackie Hall Trail on Canal Walk. I'm also a member of Seawog. And a question, this is really a question from Marlon Quant, who cannot come here, and Debbie Stewer. The question is, is the township responsible for stormwater studies and remediating flooding issues that occur on neighboring properties due to development or inadequate stormwater control on private or public properties? Let's say that B-9 gets approved and it's built, and we in Canal Walk gets flooded. Who is responsible going forward? Does Canal Walk have to create flood plans and new drainage? Is that, that's the question, so.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Peterson, 12 Lake Avenue in Somerset, New Jersey. I'm here tonight to address putting a ban on burning certain times of the year when it's most hazardous to people's health. High humidity, high temperatures do not require that you sit around the burning pot or sit around the fireplace because people with asthma, respiratory, cardiac disorders do not tolerate it well. Neither do young children, and I'm speaking for the children of Franklin because we have a lot of little tykes on Lake Avenue now. I have before me, because I was told by the Health Department, I had to bring visuals. So tonight I brought, and I'll leave it with Ann Marie, burn wise to save a few dollars is not necessary because when people think they can burn old scrap wood, old deckwood, old plywood, as is being done in my neighborhood on the corner of Lake and Hill, it causes your skin to burn at night, your eyes to burn, and believe me, you can't breathe. I've had to go from room to room inside my house with windows closed to try to find a safe haven. When people burn treated wood, they're releasing many times, and I'm talking about pressure-treated wood, arsenic, chromium. When they're burning wood from the '30s, they're probably also burning creosote, and you can smell creosote in the air. When they're burning anything that's been painted or stained, which again, from 1935 and before they banned lead in paint, guess what you're breathing? You're breathing in the toxic products of lead and other dangerous things. Greater concern are dioxins and furons, particle board, plywood board, composite wood particles from decks contain cyanide, an extremely hazardous substance. I've always wondered when they tested my blood, why I was showing arsenic and these other products. Now I know, it's coming from what people are burning. Don't burn orchards sprayed with pesticides, and finally, never burn magazines or colored paper, they're noxious, corrosive, and have carcinogenic gases. So, I have in my home two air quality monitors. Your air quality right now is testing a little high for Trivox, and CO2 is okay, CO is okay, and everything else, but I know what's going on, and in the middle of the night, these have soared in CO2 to over 1,000, which means what everybody's burning around me is robbing the air of oxygen, and it's entrapping in my house. So, also, this is a sample of what I'm taking off between my screens and windows, and my new windows were just put in in 2005, and what we have is heavy, heavy, would you like to breathe this? Ask yourself, would you like to breathe this? Would any of you? It's really sooty, and when you suddenly are getting it inside your windows with windows closed, there's something going on in the neighborhood. I've almost called the fire department twice when I've looked out the window and the house across the street has flames coming up the side of the garage. The house wasn't on fire, it's just whatever they were burning, and people now are also burning their trash because they do not have garbage pickup, nor do they have recycling pickup. Another house just next door, 15, in the past has burned so bad, you'd have thought the house was completely engulfed with fire. I am the type that I will call with a phone in my hand, but I'll go check first because I don't want to take an overburden, firemen who don't need to show up, nor policemen. So with that being said, I'm asking the township to develop, put together a burn wise policy, and submit it to your residents in your next paper who comes out, that comes out, because I know everybody gets it. Finally, please address the trucks now parking on Lake and Hill that are idling. This is what we call a noise picker, and you now have a noise ordinance? I don't want to hear trucks idling at 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Sherman Camire, live at 4 Hale Place in Canal Walk. One of you, ladies and gentlemen, was fined $40. How were you fined $40? You had an error, did not complete your real estate tax input form, and thought it was complete, and it was not. There are other people in the town that probably have the same way. What I'm getting to is the town, and it's about time, this town had automatic payments for those who wish to apply for it at a bank, and the town has to have the manager search out which bank would allow this town to do this. Unless the town is collecting an exorbitant amount of fees, fines, because people don't pay their real estate taxes on time, if that's the aim of the town, I don't think so, the town should do automatic payments if residents want to join it. There are other towns in this state that do this, and I think it's about time this town did it. Second, I want to have you understand about what's going on, Western Canal Road and Western Road, the intersection there. You may know the white lines at the side of the road are disappearing, they're now wearing out, the road is collapsing, the road has disappeared. The road is very narrow as it is, and now it's getting narrower. There are trees that are dead, that are overhanging Western Canal Road and Canal Road, that should not happen. There are trees that have dead branches, 30 feet up in there, and these branches could be two inches, maybe three inches in diameter, and they could fall on unsuspecting vehicles, and they could kill people in these vehicles from that height. There are wires hanging off of utility poles that are getting near the ground. There are utility poles that are leaning over the road. There are trees leaning on wires on these utility poles. Something has to be done about this, whether it's the county, whether it's the town, someone has to take the lead to get these fixed. Now, me calling the county doesn't get me anywhere. You calling the county would extract quick service to take care of these issues. Please, ladies and gentlemen, take care of these issues before someone gets killed on that road. There are no shoulders on Western Road and Western Canal Road on that part of the road. On the actual intersection of the two roads going up the hill, there's probably a six-inch drop-off on that road, and somebody coming the opposite way, coming over the line, the yellow line that is, would cause a car, or could cause a car, to go off the road and into the ditch, causing untold damage. This system of roads there is unsafe, in my opinion, and if you looked at it, you would have the same opinion as I did. So please, let's get automated banking into this community, let's get that situation on those two roads where they intersect made safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Timon Chase.
Theodore Chase, 159 Old Georgetown Road. I came tonight to ask about the status of some ongoing projects in the First Ward. First of all, Catalpa Park, is it ever going to be built? Or is the DEP releasing wood turtles to keep us from building it? Secondly, the Dunn House, which anybody who's ever visited knows is a beautiful house, and really, we want to sell it to someone who will take good care of it, but the process of getting approval for this seems to be very ongoing, and I'm wondering where we are in that process now. And thirdly, the houses at the end of Old Georgetown Road, one of which fell down, but it still has some things like a number of four-by-four timbers standing straight up out of the ruins. We want to get this to the state of being a somewhat attractive ruin showing the 18th century origins. The other house is still... And the other house is still standing, but it's had its corner nicked by another truck or somebody, and I'd like to know whether we are going to be able to take that house down. Both of those houses have not been occupied for over 30 years, so there's really no prospect of their being useful. I'll just mention also that Mrs. Peterson spoke also on the same subject at the Environmental Commission last night, and perhaps council can look into an ordinance limiting what can be burned in backyard fire pits, even of single-family houses, because, yeah, there could be hazardous substances admitted in the smoke, and that's not really what was intended by allowing people to have backyard fire pits. So thank you, and I'll wait and hope to hear during the manager's report answers to my
Jim Johnston at 34 Norwich Place, Somerset. I was at the planning board meeting last week, and it went very well. We had a big turnout, as usual. Now, I would say, in my estimate, maybe 300 people, although I didn't stay for the whole meeting. I left around 9:00 o'clock, so I didn't see everything that went on afterwards, but I heard some good reports. And Mr. Mayor, I saw you there, thank you for being there. I heard that our former mayor, he was there, and he gave an excellent speech. Our assemblyman, he was there, he gave an excellent speech, so I want to thank them. And I would encourage all the rest of you to come to the next planning board meeting on July 19th. They're going to probably vote on it, and if you want, you can give a speech, or even if you don't give a speech, just being present there will give them a message that we have a lot of support. All right? Now, all the planning board meetings that we had so far, you know, they've been going over all the traffic reports, and how many trees are going to be, how many trees, and what kind of trees, and so on. But in my opinion, no one has been talking so much about the questions that I want to be asking about, is how did this whole benign situation come about in the first place? And I wanted, and that leads me to my next question. And I want to, at the last council meeting, there was some talk about a picture that was taken at a country club in Hillsborough. And I don't want to, you know, make it seem like, because that picture, I grant what you say, you said that picture was taken back in 2014, which is long before benign ever happened, okay? And I'm not saying that that picture proves anything, all right? But could I tell you what my reaction is? And I want to address my comments mainly to the people who are in that picture, who are on the planning board, okay? Mark Healy and Vince Dominack. It just seemed to me, my impression is, it just didn't seem right to me for the members of the planning board to be socializing with the developer, okay? I mean, that's just my view. And I found out, I mean, the name of the developer who was in that picture, Anatole Hiller, I didn't even know who he was until recently. It turns out that he's the developer for Canal Walk, and he's the, also, he's the developer for Summer Fields at Franklin, which also goes by the name of Premier Development. Well, in September 2021, Mr. Hiller's Premier Development Company sold the property to Link Logistics for $24 million, okay? And of that, he made a 23, he made, his profit was 23 million, because he originally bought the property for less than a million, so then he sells it for 24 million, so guess what? He makes a profit of 23 million. Yeah, so these are the questions, I mean, and it seems like someone is putting, someone is saying that profits are more important than people, okay? I mean, it shouldn't be that way. And this whole thing was done in secrecy. When Anatole Hiller, the developer who sold that property for benign, he didn't even tell the Canal Walk residents what he was going to sell it. It was all done secretly. And the Canal Walk residents didn't even find out about it until several months later, when they get these forms in the mail. I mean, it's, so, I mean, and so I'm just trying to, you know, get, find out what's going on, and I don't know what, I mean, maybe at the next planning board meeting, you know, I haven't even seen Anatole. I don't know if he's been coming to the planning board meetings, but, okay, so anyway, I just wanted to get that point across, and, okay, okay, well, thank you for listening.
Terry Thorson, 18 Lebed Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. Congratulations for finishing up the proposal for the Community Development Block Grant. I know that's a big thing for our town, and the resolution's going to be entered tonight. But now that you've got that done, I'd like to know what the progress is on the goals for Franklin Township for 2024. I've asked this before. I know we had none for 2023, because I asked that and found out there were none, and I really think if we're looking to the future, we have to have some plans in place. Another thing is, I was at the planning board meeting also, and I've been looking at a lot of the applications, and I'm wondering if it's in the purview of the council to change the application process. Reason is this, everyone I looked at that was asking for a C variance said that the reason they were doing it was that, and they just check a box, the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. They're never asked to explain how they're going to advance that law by being granted that variance. I think they should be asked to say how that's going to be done. Another thing with the application, there's no requirement for a sound or a noise study to be done. And, oh, yeah, all the applications, if they're going to be retention basins, they were really detailed, like 30, 40 pages long, plans for maintenance for those basins, so that flooding won't occur. And yet, for their landscaping, which should be soaking up water, there's no maintenance plan. All they would tell us was that, well, you know, when we buy them, we've got a year or two guarantee, and if they die in a year or two, they'll be replaced. And then after that, it's up to the people who are in the warehouse or whatever development is to take care of them. We need materials that will soak up water. You saw what happened in Orange County yesterday. If that had been 50 miles to the west, it would have been us. We would have had another IDA here. We can't have development on virgin land, and if we have to have it on virgin land, the replacement trees have to be ones that soak up water. Apparently, Link knows this, because they're planting swamp maples, is one of the trees they're planting, and another one they're planting is the state tree of Louisiana, which kind of floods every once in a while. So the developers themselves are admitting that areas where they're building are flooding, they're trying to, you know, ameliorate it somehow, but if they're not going to maintain the landscaping, they're wasting their money, and they're putting everybody in the town in danger.
Michael Hampton, 319 Schillen Drive, Somerset. On June 13th, as many of you know, the cops were called because of my actions, apparently during the council meeting. I have since tried to find the laws that I have violated that night. The clerk's office provided me with tons of papers, I mean, hundreds, and I looked. I couldn't find anything. I looked up the Sunshine Law, I believe it is. Again, I couldn't find anything that I did that was out of the rules set forth in the state of New Jersey and the rules that the council follows. I would love for the mayor or the township attorney or any member of the council to provide me with a written list of rules, so that we don't have another issue like we did on the 13th of June. I think a list should be posted outside or made available to everyone of the rules that this particular council is choosing to be governed by. And if those rules listed are all being followed, I would ask that the council members, especially the ones that represent my ward, being Ward 3, would speak up for the folks of that ward when they're being mistreated by the town manager in the presence of the entire town council. I will try to speak to my councilperson after the meeting. I would like a formal apology. I think in today's society and culture, as a young black man, had I not come from a household with the nuclear family, if I'd not come from parents that were both college educated, if I myself wasn't college educated, if I would have adhered to councilman's rights suggestions that the town manager, being a former police officer, had the power to have me arrested and thrown in jail that night, if I had succumbed to those fears, like a lot of black people that look like me do in America today, things could have gone very differently. I also don't appreciate that those two officers that were called, once relieved of any suspicion of wrongdoing, stayed here for two hours, for no other purpose than to watch me. Now, if I fail to get those rules or fail to get that apology that I feel like I'm rightfully deserve, then I will file with the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office for a violation of my civil rights under the First Amendment. I will file civil litigation within Superior Court of New Jersey against the town council for the amount of $25 million. I will name you personally, Mr. Mayor, and I will name you personally, Mr. Vern Locker. The other option is that the town council considers the moral indemnity clause or ineptitude clause that suggests, which is one of the only ways you can remove a town manager. I can't think of anything morally reprehensible than to falsely call the police when you know that you have power due to your previous positions held over the police department and use them as your personal bullies or hall monitors. It's a waste of public resources. I didn't threaten anybody. I didn't even stand up from a seat. All I did was say that an elected official should have the right to vote, and that an elected official should have the right to make a statement prior to saying yes or no, all of which they have the legal right in the state of New Jersey to do. That's all I'd say.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Angela Cavaleski, 1 Hale Place, Canal Walk. I wasn't planning to get up, but when I heard the gentleman who spoke prior to Terry, when he talked about the land sale, when I heard that they were going to build on the corner, my first thought, because I wasn't thinking it through logically, was, well, I'm on the other end of Canal Walk, it's not going to affect me. I have since learned a lot since that time. I do hear the Amazon trucks when they shift gears at night, when they leave the plant, because I'm down that end. However, then I heard the amount of money that they got for the amount of land that they bought, and I don't know how much per acre, it's been a year of fighting this, and I don't remember, I have it in writing, close to what? How many acres, 30 or less than 30? 24 and how much money? A lot, okay? My father had a 70-acre farm, which we sold in the early 20s. He did not get a million dollars. He got just under a million dollars, okay? It was raw land, it was not a wetlands. It was rolling hills, Toll Brothers was considering building there. It's a beautiful, beautiful piece of land. Fortunately, I went through this on the other side, what you guys are fighting now. You know, we sold it to a developer. However, the developer ran into some problems, so he sold off the house, the buildings, there were like 13 buildings, it was a big farm, dairy farm, and he kept that land, he leased it for a while to a worker, then someone bought it, about 15 acres, they kept a couple horses there. The rest of the land went into, what do you call it, preservation. So they will never build it. It looks like a freaking jungle, but so be it. The amount of money that they got for that land is staggering, just staggering, and that's why I got involved with Seawag, because I know something isn't right. To have that kind of money, to think you're going to come in and just take over the town is unbelievable. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one come forward, may I motion we close the public portion?
Second.
Move then, second in all, in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
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 Post say nay, public portion is closed. There are a lot of questions I couldn't, can't answer. Mrs. Peterson, I think that's an excellent idea to have an article about what can be safely burned and what can't be safely burned. And perhaps, when you speak, Mr. Manager, maybe there are already some ordinances about that.
I don't know. I, to be perfectly honest with you, I do not know. I mean, one of the, you know, one of the things that Mrs. Peterson mentioned about burning of treated wood, I know is a problem that can release dangerous chemicals into the air, but I would have to confer with others, including the health department and fire prevention, to give you an accurate answer to that. I did, I did speak with Mrs. Peterson prior to the meeting, because Mrs. Peterson and I had a conversation a while back about the particular property that she was speaking of, when I happened to be out at that corner of Hill and Lake. And I had reported to the health department violations that I saw on the property, and I know that the health department has followed up with notices of violation, and I would let Mrs. Peterson know that today. So it is, in a way, an open investigation with the health department. So we can certainly have a conversation about the types of materials being burned, and if there's a violation, and we can follow through with that.
I'll not address benign. It's currently hearing, and I actually have a member of the planning board here, plus Councilman Rahm, so I think it inappropriate that I address that, but I would ask the township attorney to address your opinion about us speaking, members of council speaking at a planning board meeting.
Actually, Mayor, the, since the planning board is appointed and is more of a legislative, excuse me, and they have a specific role under the land use law, there are certain circumstances where the municipal governing body, and we've discussed those in this council meeting, can appear before the zoning board, but they cannot appear before a planning board. They're appointed by this board, they're an independent board, and you cannot appear as a member of the council before the planning board.
And if you could address rules of conduct at a council?
Sure. There are obviously, you know, there are state laws with regards to disruption of public meetings. There was, pretty recently, I think it's probably in 2022 or 2021, a United States District Court case, Judge Wolfson was the judge, the name escapes me, I think it's Gardner, that talked about your ability, the mayor's ability to control, or the presiding officer's ability to control a meeting. And essentially, what it said is that there are, you know, in First Amendment law, there are public forums, and there are limited public forums. This is a limited public forum, so there's rules of conduct. You get to speak during the period of time that is allocated under the Sunshine Law for people to speak, but yelling out from the audience is certainly an act that can be disruptive to a meeting, so you do have that ability to control, you know, and we do it kind of regularly all the time. So I don't, I'm not sure if that answers the question or not, but certainly, under First Amendment law at least, the presiding officer in any municipal council meeting, and this is not just Franklin, this is anywhere, has the ability to control the conduct of a meeting. I think that the case, Judge Wolfson's case, and I'll get the case where you may, and circulate it to council, arose out of a Marlboro Township Board of Education meeting. So kind of a similar public forum question.
And the rules of voting, about giving a speech during a vote?
Well, once again, well, the townships, the manner in which we, our meetings are conducted, unless there is a specific rule, we default to Robert's Rules of conducted, unless there is a specific rule, we default to Robert's Rules of Order. And Robert's Rules of Order says that you're not to make comments during a roll call. There are times for comments and times for no comments, but essentially, Robert's Rules of Order says that once the roll call has begun, the public, the discussion on the dais has ended. So that's the strict compliance with Robert Rules of Order.
And that's cited in the ordinance.
Correct.
Chapter five.
You, have you written down a list or can I?
I do have some things that I can address as well on questions that were asked. I will start with.
Council comments first.
The easiest, we tried to get answers to people so that they don't have to stay councilman. So I will try to get answers somewhere quick. Weston Road, Weston Canal Road, I will have investigated by the Public Works Department. Tree canopy is an issue that generally falls under the responsibility of the public service tree companies and tree trimming through contractors with public services. There, it's their power lines, so I'll certainly address that tomorrow. I can reach out to our contact at public service if there are issues with trees and the wires. I know that they're out in town often. As far as the application process, and the attorney may want to jump in on this as well, the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey governs the application process for both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board. Those things that are required of an applicant are required because of that law, those laws, not because of the township of Franklin. We have a number of requirements in our municipal zoning ordinance related to applications, but those are generally design standards and, and in certain cases, such as stormwater, our stormwater regulations exceed the minimum, so they have to comply with our stormwater regulations. And stormwater regulations are probably among the most detailed as far as applications to the zoning board and planning board. So that's why it's so voluminous. So that's that. This Dr. Chase, I have some answers. You won't, may not like them, but I do know where they're at as far as the progress is concerned. Catawba is in its final stages of approval as it relates to the historic investigation that then subsequently became required, along with archaeological investigation surrounding the house in the middle of Catawba Park. And we hope to be able to begin the bid preparation and bid process. I'm thinking fourth quarter of the year. That's, that's the most recent information I have, which is within the last week or two from the engineers as far as our feedback from DEP on Catawba. Dunn is in the final stages, and we are about to prepare for a public hearing that's required for the diversion process, and I would hope to have that done within the next month or two. Summertime is always a, kind of a downtime for the Open Space Advisory Committee and our consultant, but I think that we should be able to put something together. Hopefully, I'm going to say September, October would be the public hearing. You have to announce for a period of time and prior to the, the public hearing itself. So that's where Dunn is at. Old Georgetown Road, obviously, one house was taken down by the Public Works Department on an emergency approval that was not easy to obtain from the state Historic Preservation Office. They refused to grant emergency status for the other home and required us to engage a consultant grub to prepare all the necessary reports and paperwork and documentation. And they are now considering the, the raising of the second house. They have yet to give us approval to complete the first house removal as they review all of the photographs and documentation that was submitted to them, because every piece had to be documented before it could be removed from the site. So that's where it's at there. The state, I would say, state, state, state on the three that you asked about. Unfortunately, DEP and Chippewa on the other two. That's where we're at. And I think I covered all of those things that needed to be covered on my end. Mr. Mayor?
Did you talk about why automatic banking?
Oh, so we can talk a little bit about automatic banking. So, so you can do auto pay through your bank through ACH. That, that, many of our residents do that. As far as allowing for the township to process credit card payments would require us to maintain credit card information locally here, and it's been determined by a number of different sources, including our joint insurance fund, that we're not a bank and we're not, we're not equipped to safeguard your credit card information and assume that risk based on what would be required to do so. There may be towns that do it. They're assuming that risk, that, that the township is a member of the Central Jersey Joint Insurance Fund, and for insurance reasons and for liability reasons, the township is not prepared to assume that risk at this time.
But, for instance, my PSE and G bill comes directly out of my bank account.
As I said, ACH payments from your bank, you can set those payments up with your bank individually, not through the township. And then you're having that bill paid by your bank because you've set that up with your bank. Most banks will do that.
Okay. All right. We're on to council comments. Mr. Wright? Nice hat. Mic isn't on, but okay.
I'm talking from the Amtrak Blues.
Amtrak. I thought you said.
For the last two weeks, for the last two weeks, Amtrak from Newark, from New Brunswick to Newark, I had to go from New Brunswick to New York to double back to Newark. So just to let me know that Amtrak is still in charge, the bus broke down. I missed the damn train, and here I am.
God bless you. Councilman Udean, Councilwoman Udean.
Thank you. I, I feel the traffic pain. I'm sure Kimberly Francois also feels it, where sometimes our bus buddies. So I don't have much to say. I just want to congratulate our new officers and everyone that got sworn in this, this meeting. I think most of the questions today were already answered, so I won't go get into all the things. But I do agree that we should have some 2024 goals. I like when there's goals, because it gives us directions and things that we can see what's happening in town. So I do like that idea. And that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Vasinella.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, congratulations to the new officers that were sworn in and to the ones that were promoted. The thing for the automatic payments, I'm glad the manager had explained that. I was wondering, because I know we try to provide the, whatever we can. And I'm not sure, maybe when you hear other towns are doing it, maybe people are just doing it the way the manager had described. It sounds like there is an option that a bank can do it directly and we can receive it. But I don't know enough about the details. But I do know that in most situations, it's not a matter of if, but when your system's going to be hacked or exploited in whatever way. So I, I support us being on the conservative side of not chancing it with the liability issue that the manager raised. But if there's any new information or any way, any, any ways that it's being done that we can avoid that, I would be all for it, and we can look to explore it. Some was, some commentary was already said about the burning situation. I think all of us up here, I know when we were, you were talking about it, I was talking with the attorney, my colleague here, deputy mayor, that it's a little tricky, because there's state statutes, and maybe the attorney can, can talk a little bit about it when, when council's done. But it's common sense, but not everybody does what common sense would dictate, that you don't burn things that have paint or glue or plywood. I would not want to restrict people being able to have a fire of sorts, especially for cooking or roasting marshmallows or whatnot. But as far as what they burn, I think it's common sense, and I think we all kind of agree. How it's written in state statute or local law, I think whatever we don't know about it, we'll be looking into now. And of course, there's an enforcement aspect of it. But again, we could put it in our township newspaper. We could put it on our website. There's ways we can get the message out to the public. I'm sure perhaps our local media may want to disseminate anything that can provide safety tips for the public for the summer. But again, I support people being able to have it, but common sense regulations that we could hopefully enforce, because what you burn matters. Thanks for bringing the topic up. And I think most of the other issues were addressed. I caught up to speed. You know, I can't speak for all of us. One of us members is on the Planning Board. I think we all keep track. Like was mentioned, we're, it's not, we're not in a position to go there and testify and speak. Technically, I guess we could sit in the audience. I try to stay abreast on what goes on there by reading either in media or watching the meetings that our township has online. On our website, we keep them all right, Emily. We keep all the Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings that you can link to and watch. You can watch the entire one. So, so we do keep involved. Just because you may not see us there, I think most of us try to, especially if it's an important issue. They're all important, but you know, there's consequence, great consequences for many residents. So, but there are boundaries, and I think most of us, most of us, all of us want to respect those boundaries for elected officials. I think that was it. Have a, we meet once again in August, but have a safe and enjoyable summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to address the Robert's Rules of Order. When I was the mayor, as our mayor is today, that is the job, the position of the chair, to conduct a successful meeting. That's what Robert Rules of Order are for. Making sure you have an agenda, making sure you follow the decorum for voting, making sure that you facilitate moving the votes along, making sure that you move the meeting along, making sure that you maintain order. There are rules in terms of how you conduct meetings, and that's what Robert Rules of Order is all about. Now, for example, we allow people to come up and speak and speak for five minutes. Another Robert Rules of Order of this council is that while we are having public discussion, we need to allow the public to speak and give them their five minutes and not do the back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Just as much as we need the public to be respectful of us, we also need to be respectful of the public. So we do have certain Robert Rules of Order that we follow. Some Robert Rules of Order are basically how you conduct a meeting, and you can manipulate those depending on how you want to, how you want to conduct that meeting. And we, as a governing body, have made a decision about how we are conducting our meeting. And our, and our mayor is the chair of the meeting, so he facilitates all of that. And we, as councilpeople, because he is the mayor, we respect the fact that he is the spokesman of the, of the township, and we give him that right to be the spokesman whenever people come up and ask questions. That's part of our Robert Rules of Order. That's part of our decorum for how we conduct our meetings here in Franklin Township. And so I just wanted to make that, that comment. And also, in terms of having like a list up that says, these are our Robert Rules of Orders, that is something we can do. That wouldn't be so difficult for us to have something listed. So when people come here that may not normally come to a council meeting, they kind of know what our Robert Rules of Order are. But it's really mainly to conduct and ensure a successful meeting. And, and that means that we have to have the proper decorum and the proper conduct ourselves, as well as how we govern the public. So I just needed to say that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Crystal Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Fortunately, I ran out to the bathroom, so I missed some of the other, my other colleagues' comments. I think a lot of what I wanted to touch on was touched on by my colleagues. I don't necessarily need to hear myself speak, so I don't need to repeat them. So I just want to congratulate the officers that were sworn in and got promotions. Acknowledge that we had fireworks. It didn't rain. As much as I kept claiming it was going to, it did not. I was wrong. That's on record. I said that I was wrong. I will never repeat that again. And want to, you know, obviously acknowledge the importance of decorum and mutual respect as we are engaging with the public. And we do have an onus on us as councilmembers, you know, lead, as well as the examples of that. And I also had questions about burning that we were, that were answered, because that was a new issue that I had not heard. So appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And that's.
Thank you. Councilman Olajaka.
First of all, to congratulate the new officers and those.
Better get closer to the mic. Hello?
Okay. I want to congratulate the new recruited and those promoted officers, too. And one, one question. The Somerset Glen Town Development, they sent me a couple of emails, complaining of mosquitoes. The residents, they want to know who handles the mosquito control, and does the township help in the control?
No, it's handled by Somerset County. Formerly, there was a thing called the Mosquito Control Commission.
Yes.
The Mosquito Control Commission was absorbed a number of years ago by Somerset County Government. It was actually a commission like we have other commissions in the town. It was, it was kind of independently operated outside of county government. However, the county road department is now responsible for the spraying of, for mosquitoes. And if there is someone who has a problem with mosquitoes, they can contact the Somerset County Road Department.
Actually, the entire.
For the entire county. It's for the entire county. And they, and they will, if you have breeding areas on private property that you grant access to, they will spray on private property as well as public properties.
Okay. From what, you tell them they should contact the Somerset County?
Road Department.
Road Department. Okay. Thank you.
And Charles, if you want, send me an email tomorrow, and I'll send you the contact information for that.
Definitely, I will do that, sir. Thank you. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Petasnik.
Thank you. I guess with all the rain we're having, there's a couple of things you can do for mosquitoes. Get rid of standing water, so any buckets or your wheelbarrow that you didn't turn over so it would empty. All those become places where mosquitoes just love to live. And then embrace bats. They eat a ton of mosquitoes. And if you can put up a bat house, not in your belfry, but maybe somewhere else. If you already have them in your belfry, then maybe just feed them. I don't know. But nature, nature has a way of providing that balance. But with the rain that we've been having, it's not surprising. Folks are seeing, seeing the consequences of that. Yeah, congratulations to the officers. Happy Fourth of July. Hope everyone had a nice holiday to celebrate America. I want to thank the residents of Riding's Parkway in that community who came out on Monday night. We had a meeting. Over a third of the residents voiced an opinion about a proposal that we have for the medians in the community to make them more consistent with grass and trees. And we had a nice conversation on Monday. The township manager, I want to thank you for coming, the mayor, myself, and also our Public Works Director, Carl Haugt, on the heels of losing one of his colleagues earlier in that day. And despite that, it was a very productive conversation. We took a lot of information in. I would be coming forward. In addition, four members of the Shade Tree Commission, the chair and the vice chair, and two other members came, which was awesome. And we're talking about trees and how they could be water tolerant and make sure that they survive. And there's no doubt folks are thinking more and more about climate change with everything happening in the Northeast, much like what we saw in Hurricane Ida and Superstorm Sandy, and we're seeing floods in Florida and fires and mudslides and all these different things. This past week saw the three hottest days ever recorded, ever, worldwide. And it used to be called global warming, and so people call it climate change now because it explains the winter and the swings. But it's too much water, too little water. Right? We have fires. We have all kinds of other things as a result of that, crops that don't make it and increase our food insecurity, our food prices. And also, all the folks that are first responders in those emergency situations. And so we need to be mindful. I'm proud of the work that Franklin Township's done. And so, we need to be mindful, I'm proud of the work that Franklin Township's done in doing our part to be more sustainable, Silver certified. But, you know, just be aware what you can do in your own home as well. One thing that can be really helpful, and it saves you money too, is community solar. There's a number of companies that are legitimate, and you should read all the fine print, but allow you to use solar panels on a warehouse or a big box store or something else that already exists. And subscribe to that at home, and you can receive a discount up to twenty-something percent. I did that, and you actually save money. I think I'm saving eighteen percent off my electric bill. And that's great too, because it's solar and not based on fossil fuels, which add carbon pollution and exacerbate the conditions that we're seeing. So, I think that's it for me today. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Embarrassen.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congrats to the new offices for joining Franklin PD. I think some of them have something in common with me. I believe that most of them are from Camden County Metro Police Academy. In 2011, I was instrumental in heading that police academy at the community college, Camden Community College, county college at the time. So, I feel proud, happy about some of the work that we did way back ten, eleven years ago, still continues there, and we are hiring people from there. Are we full strength now in our department, or we still have?
And I see the officer in the back laughing, because it seems like just as soon as we get to that point, someone retires or someone transfers to another agency. So, I would say that we're probably in pretty good shape right now, but there still are a couple vacancies.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so our intention is to be at full strength as soon as possible, and obviously we, we go out and bring good officers and focusing on local residents if we can, and I believe there are some more that we are looking at, a woman officer, lady officer, very soon. So, we will keep that going. Of course, I'm part of the planning board. It's a very hot subject here, so I don't want to comment anything, but we do ask a lot of tough questions to all, to all the applicants that come in front of us asking for permits and approvals. So, we take our jobs very seriously, all the commissioners, and we try to apply the law as it is intended, and we will keep doing our jobs, hopefully to the best of our ability going forward as well. Other than that, July 3rd, how about that? We had a great event, fantastic music. I loved the Motown songs. It was fantastic, and I think a big hand to the rec department and the township staff for pulling it off. The weather, the rain guards cooperated, so we didn't have any rain like the last time we attempted to do. It rained just for the thirty minutes the fireworks happened the last time I was here for that one. So, that was a great get together. I think lots of people showed up, especially in the evening for the concept, the gazebo. I've never seen it so full. And happy to see the donor that made the gazebo possible, Vimal Sudani and his wife were there, and they made a huge contribution to build that gazebo, and thanks to him and his family for doing that. I think there's more events throughout the summer planned, hopefully whether we'll cooperate, and we will have similar success with all those programs. Other than that, we had a HRC meeting end of the month. The Environmental Commission Chair, Paul Olinsky, was the one that gave us a speech and about the mission and goals of the Environmental Commission. And on top of that, there was a spirited discussion about the need for low-cost rental places in Franklin. As you know, our rentals are quite high in town because of our proximity to New Brunswick Rutgers, so there was a discussion, but nothing really was decided. There's really no easy answer for that. Other than that, enjoy the summer, and I have nothing more to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Congratulations to our police, as others have said. We've got a great police force, very proud of them, and I feel very secure with them. Reiterate, it was a great Fourth of July celebration. Thank you again to the police for being there, the fire departments for being there in case something went awry. But I always want to point out DPW, because they're there when we all leave, and they're still sweeping up. And we couldn't do it without any of those groups. And congratulations to Councilmember Petasnik. The Princeton Highlands meeting was extremely well done, I think extremely successful. People felt they were part of the decision-making process, and it's a good model for us to follow. I've spoken enough. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I left this one to my report rather than to do it as an answer to a question, because I don't think it was an answer to a question. I think it was more, I don't know, an insinuation that something might have been amiss in 2014. So, let me address the photograph that Mr. Johnston brought up again. Mrs. Brant had previously brought it up at a meeting, and actually, I've subsequently received an apology from Mrs. Brant because clearly she was misinformed as to the nature of the photograph. The photograph comes from a Facebook page of the Somerset County Business Partnership. The business partnership being, in essence, the Chamber of Commerce for Somerset County. In 2014, the business partnership sponsored a Meet the Mayors series throughout the county. In that particular Meet the Mayors event, it was for Montgomery, Hillsborough, Millstone Borough, and Franklin Township. And the purpose of the Meet the Mayors event that was organized by then Executive Director Mike Kerwin was to bring the mayors out to discuss the economic development initiatives in their particular town at that time. And at that time, Mayor Levine asked both Vince Dominack and Mark Healy, as well as me, to come there to assist him should there be any questions about our economic development initiatives that he didn't have the answers for. And the premier sponsor for the event and the money being paid to the Somerset Business Partnership was Premier Development. And that's why Mr. Hiller was there. It had nothing to do with development of warehouses. It had nothing to do, in all honesty, with Mark Healy or Vince Dominack or me. Mr. Kerwin had a photographer there and asked for photographs to be taken with the sponsors. Mr. Hiller, the chief executive of Premier Development, was the, was the principal sponsor of that part of the series of Meet the Mayors. So, if you have any other questions, you can certainly ask me directly, but I hardly think that there was any conspiracy or any underhandedness or any, anything that was at all suspicious about the fact that we were asked to be there by our mayor for a Meet the Mayors event, and we went and accompanied him to help him if he had any questions about economic development initiatives that he didn't know the answers to. There you have it. And I think I'm done talking, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We on to item number nine, council discussion items. There are none. Approval of the minutes, number 10, there are none submitted. We're on now to pay our bills. Approval of the warrants. Warrants in the amount of $3,087,629.60 on July 11th, 2023 are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do I have a motion on the warrants?
I move that the warrants is ready to be paid.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion, anyone like to pull an item? Being none, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Number 12, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, 2023 Action Plan. It is appropriate now to have a public hearing. Would you like to speak first, Ms. Mitchell?
So, tonight we have on the agenda the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Program. Man, y'all had me sitting here too long. Let me start over. I have the annual action plan for 2023 on the agenda for approval tonight. This represents the fourth plan year for our consolidated plan, which runs from 2020 to 2024. The township will receive an allocation of $348,561 for activities for the upcoming year. The monies given to the township under this action plan will assist the township and provide indecent, affordable housing to frail elderly and special needs residents of Franklin Township, to provide support to nonprofits for public facility improvements, to provide support to nonprofits for homeless prevention, support infrastructure improvements in East Franklin should they be identified, and support economic development opportunities for low and moderate income residents should they be identified during the plan year. The activities encompass a grant to Willett Senior Residence for $16,400, to alternatives for their Vince Road property for $35,000, to alternatives for Charles Street for $78,000, the Ark of Somerset for Clermont Road for $45,000, the Center for Great Expectations $25,500, to home sharing for homeless prevention, $10,000, to Middle Earth for their Journeys Program, $10,000, to Central Jersey Housing Resource Center, $10,017, to Center for Great Expectations, $10,767 for their childcare program, to the Franklin Food Bank for $1500, to the Somerset YMCA for their swim-around program, $10,000, to the Sisters Network, $5,000 for their ground improvements, to the Franklin Food Bank, $24,377,000, to SCAP, $15,000, and $52,000 for program administration. That pretty much covers it, and I thank you.
Thank you. It's now time to open for public hearing on CDVG, physically, financial FY?
It should say F.
Yeah, it does. It does. It's physical year 2023 Annual Action Plan. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
Moved in second. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open to the public on CDVG only. Anyone wishing to speak? If no one come forward, may your motion close the public portion of the hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public portion is closed. Resolution 23, 283, approving the filing of the FY 2023 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan is presented to Township Council for adoption. Do I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni-Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Petasnik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Abstain.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you wish to explain your abstention?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. No, because I'm on the Board of Directors as a volunteer of one of the organizations that gets a grant usually. I abstain just as advised by the attorney. I'm a volunteer board member.
Good plan, and thank you for your service. Public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading, there are none. Ordinances and introduction on first reading, first reading is where we announce to the public, and ordinance is coming before us. This will be ordinance number 4417-23, an ordinance amending the code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, New Jersey, more particularly changing chamber, chapter 222, title to Trees and Vegetation, and adding Article III, Bamboo.
So moved.
foregoing ordinance presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on August 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. You have, you have to announce that part, or it's not valid. I got to say the date. In the council chambers, got to say the place too. Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Move that. Yes, I move that. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? This was brought up because of some people coming and having the problem of a neighbor's bamboo, which it tends to do, grows, I believe, to the south usually, and overtaking their My only question about the, and basically this states, the way this is written is, you can't plant bamboo unless it's in a container. And that is one way to go about it, and that's fine. Another way to go about it is, if you plant bamboo, you can plant it wherever you want, but if it goes over property line, then you're responsible for it. So, my question is, philosophical question, not really. Do we want to keep people from growing bamboo at all, which might actually be an agricultural question and an environmental question? Or do we, do we want to specify how you have to plant it? Because to me, the real problem is when it grows over your property line. I'm not hard and fast on either of this. I'm considering it.
Mayor, the research that I saw, there's different kinds of bamboo. This is running bamboo, which is the one that tends to be invasive. The issue is that once you get to a point where it's over the property line, kind of the, I'm starting to mix agricultural metaphors, the horse is out of the barn.
There you go.
And it becomes very costly and impossible to then remediate. So, the thought is, is to not allow it to be planted in, in ground, because once it is, there's no way, there's literally no way to stop it. And, you know, the bamboo doesn't know where the property line is, and it grows, and then one day, the neighbor will wake up and, you know, in one spring and find that it has bamboo shoots growing in their backyard, and at that point in time, now you'd have to literally dig up the soil in both backyards to get it done. So, this is really done to be preventative, and, but there are other bamboos that don't do this. So, that's the whole point. If you, if you do want to grant, if you do want to plant that, then you just have to plant the right bamboo. There is a, there's actually a state law, there, actually a state law, there actually is a bill in Trenton that would prohibit the sale of running bamboo because it's so invasive.
And we specifically named that bamboo in this draft of the ordinance.
Correct.
But, you know, so I had the opportunity to talk to a master gardener about bamboo, and they said, basically, if you want to keep that bamboo from spreading beyond a property line, you would need to put three-foot steel plates into the ground to keep the roots from crossing over property lines. And it's, and that, that, I don't know. I don't know, because I'm not a horticulturist or a master gardener. a master gardener, but I don't know how long it takes, once the roots are beyond a property line, before it sprouts up above ground. And I think that if we were to consult, say, the Environmental Commission, it is an invasive species. It's not, certainly not native to New Jersey.
Right.
And that's just what I've been able to find out since we've had these conversations.
So for clarification, are we considering or thinking about alterations? Is that something that would come up when we have the, I just want to understand procedurally?
Well, I think procedurally, if we were going to alter it, we'd want to alter it now.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I mean, respectfully, it's called running, so I imagine.
Right, it's called running, and it's not often that this, but I understood and understand why this is happening tonight. Most often, we introduce ordinances, and then they've been thoroughly discussed and vetted. This is one of those ones that is open for discussion, to be honest with you.
And is running the same species that's usually in the ornamental, kind of?
I mean, it's used, primarily, it's used for a privacy, you know, curtain, so to speak, for people to keep privacy in their yards. It certainly blocks the view from either the street or your neighbors.
Awesome.
So I read it differently. Maybe you could shed some light on it. So at one point, I think it says above-ground container, but then later, it just says container, and there's no definition of what the container is. So I would consider a septic tank a container, is an underground container, or a fuel storage tank a container, underground, et cetera. You see my logic? And my assumption was, the way it was written, that if you planted it, you had to devise such a container to ensure it didn't go into a neighbor's yard. Maybe it's three-foot steel, or maybe it's concrete, maybe you go laterally or horizontally instead of vertically, right? Yeah. So I thought that was okay. We weren't really prohibiting it from being planted. Mostly, you would want to plant it in a vessel, probably above ground, but if you wanted to go with a big container, underground, to ensure that it doesn't get into the neighbor's yard, because if it does, it's pretty stiff. I mean, you got to deal with it, it's hard to deal with. If you can't deal with it, the township's going to deal with it, and that's going to come at an expense for our labor and et cetera. So I think there's a little difference of opinion on it.
So, well, as, as the crafter, I think that, I think that it refers back to, when it says planting, it refers to the container described above, and the container above is above-ground level.
So it's only above?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's an above-ground-level plant or barrel or other vessel of such design and material and location has to entirely prevent?
Or other vessel of such design, which would be an underground container.
Well, I guess, we're going to have to parse this sentence.
No, no, but that's how I read it.
As I read it, I read it that it has to be above-ground.
I don't think that's clear here.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting you want to just make?
Can I suggest, if you see some ambiguity in it, then we can just add the words, "or other above-ground vessel"?
That's all. If that's what you guys want, then that's what we should do.
Marie, did you get that?
So I will move.
Or other above-ground, you could just amend it on introduction.
Oh, we don't have to do a motion?
Have we moved to introduce it yet?
No, we're discussing.
No, we're discussing it. So you can move it to be introduced as revised.
We have a motion in a second.
Yes. And who made the motion?
I did.
By the way, this is Robert's rules of order, so if you, somebody else would, who's the second?
I'll second it.
So there's a good sentence.
So now you could make a motion to amend?
That's what I was going to do.
Yes.
I moved to make an amendment to 2226A to insert between the second line, "or other", between "other" and "vessel," the word "above-ground." Or "other above-ground vessel" would be the final reading of such design.
Yes.
We have a motion to amend. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so we're voting now on the amendment, not on the itself. Marie?
Deputy Mayor Barrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
And any other discussion on the motion?
No, we amended the motion. On the motion.
I see no other discussion on the motion. So, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you. Consent agenda, items A through DD is, as, DD?
AD.
AD.
There's DD here, that seems, yes.
AD.
AD, as listed on the consent agenda portion of this meeting, are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
No move.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Anyone like to pull an item?
I wanted to get clarification on two items that are linked.
Go ahead.
Sorry, no microphone. So the township is in receipt of opioid settlement funds, and will continue to be in receipt of opioid settlement funds for several years to come. This was as a result of the major opioid manufacturers and distributors settling with the federal government, and then the state attorney general enjoining New Jersey, along with many of the other states of the country, in that lawsuit that resulted, those lawsuits, I should say plural, that resulted in these settlements. The Township of Franklin was entitled to a certain amount of money related to those settlements, and the Division of Community Affairs at the state advised all municipalities that those funds should be treated as grants. Therefore, we have to do a Chapter 159 related to those, and there's two of them, because one is the distributor settlement, and one is the Janssen manufacturer settlement. So that's why two. Sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So just curious, the follow-up, if Councilwoman was?
The follow-up is, what will it be used for?
So right now, there are some programs being developed with, by our police department for community outreach related to youth drug prevention programs, as well as the Alliance for Drug Abuse is going to be involved in that process. And as we move forward, certainly, there will be other programs related specifically to drug prevention and intervention as far as those who are currently suffering from addiction.
$130,000 that are coming to help for?
So it's been received thus far, yes.
Well.
Yep.
Shane had an opioid crisis, but at least it sounds like the settlement's going to excellent use.
But isn't the municipal alliance involved in this?
That's what I said, the municipal alliance is all, exactly. I don't know if you heard me. I said that will also, they will also be involved in programming for prevention, and there's already been conversations between the director and members of the alliance.
Okay.
People still dying every day in this state, in every state, from opioids. Anyway, if Councilwoman was done, I just had one other.
I had one other resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So V? I just wanted to call out V for our township manager. V. V is in Victor.
You have to go to detention.
So that's a law enforcement against drugs grant assistance program. That's another one where we're submitting an application for a $20,000 grant. That's just an application. We have to do a resolution when we apply for grants, too.
I thought it was for lead paint, that's why I was calling out.
No. Oh, wait, you know, so there's too many leads and leads around. So the state of New Jersey has a lead, so there's the law that requires rentals of single-family, multifamily residences to have lead inspections, and there's, so, yes. So that is a state grant to go towards our, what will be new program related to lead inspections. I'm sorry, I got lead and lead because I got the police department applying for lead grants, too, so.
Appreciate it, just wanted to call that out for folks.
And Councilmember Potasnick, this, he.
He's a bad influence.
Well, I always say, I need to pay attention.
Bad influence.
No, he's been out of control tonight.
Yes.
The corum, the corum, the corum. Councilman Vasanella?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not looking to pull anything. I just see Resolution 23-276, which is right underneath the lead-led one above it, and invocar vivident manufacturing. I don't know how long it ended in Franklin, and I don't know what they manufacture, but it's her 100th year anniversary celebration. God bless them. 1923, they were manufacturing, and I think it's great if they're still assuming they're manufacturing something that we don't dislike. But seriously, congratulations to them on 100 years of keeping manufacturing and jobs in this country. They're here in Franklin on Pierce Street.
They're a dental company.
Well, assuming it's not controversial, but.
I'd say not.
In 1923, I don't know what kind of dental instruments, but again, that's just great. Congratulations to them. That's all I had to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hold or pick up one? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Resolutions to be voted on separately. These were, are voted on separately because they were added after the initial agenda came out. They're related. I believe I can do them together. 23-285 and 23-286, they're both related to the American Rescue Plan 2021 COVID State Physical Recovery Fund Gunshot Detection Technology Initiative Grant of $339,000. And one is to authorize the acceptance of the grant, and the other is to insert it into the municipal budget. We have a motion on the resolutions to be voted on separately.
If I have a clarifying question, it's after the motions.
Yes.
Okay. Then second.
Moved in seconded. Now is time for discussion.
So I just want to just make the clarification, because I know people will see American Rescue Plan. So that was American Rescue Plan dollars that the state's Attorney General Office set aside for things, not our allocation of ARP.
No, this has nothing to do with our allocation of American Rescue Plan funds. This is just the title of the grant references ARP, and it is money being received from the state Attorney General's office.
Want to make sure people understand?
Yes, good question. Very, very good question.
It was a good question. I didn't realize that. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
All of business, boards, committees, commissions, anyone have a nomination? Being none? We have no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you have to stay after. We are adjourned. Be well, Franklin.